I'd like to call this meeting in the Clay County Commission to Order. We will begin with our invocation, Reverend Josh Friedland, I hope I pronounced that correctly. Reverend Josh, when you're ready, please proceed.
Will you pray with me? Father God, we thank you for this day and this season when we remember your birth. Father, we thank you for the business to be taken tonight. We thank you for the commission who gives of their time to serve their community. Father, we pray that this meeting, that calm heads prevail, that conversation is glorifying to you and to the city and to the county of Clay County. Lord, we thank you for this opportunity to be here tonight. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Reverend, if you would like to let us know what congregation you're from?
I'm the senior pastor at Carney Crossroads Community Church in Carney, just south. It's the one you see on the highway as you're driving north, right before you get into Carney. So, yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With that, please call the roll.
Commissioner Nolte, Commissioner Withington.
Here.
Commissioner Lawson.
Here.
Commissioner Wagner.
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion related to the approval of the agenda for this evening? Commissioner Wagner.
I move to approve tonight's agenda with the addition of the Liberty North Football Rally Celebration Item under Discussion Items, which has been distributed, I believe, to all commission members.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson, did you wish to be recognized? Okay. Are there any other discussion on the agenda approval? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner.
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is a single ceremonial matter, and that is the honorary resolution for Liberty North Eagles football team, and that is from Commissioner Withington. Commissioner, if you'd like to hit your microphone, I will recognize you to proceed.
Okay. All right. So I'll just go ahead and read this real quick. It says, whereas the Liberty North Eagles football team led by Coach Andy Lierman achieved a historic winning, historic season, winning the Missouri Class VI State Championship, the first football state title in school history and the first in the history of Liberty Public Schools. Whereas the Eagles posted a 13-1 record this season, making it to their second state championship game in the last three seasons. Over the last four years, the Liberty North Eagles have achieved a record of 45 wins and seven losses. Whereas the Eagles' Melvin Lester won his third consecutive Buck Buchanan Award, as well as was named Missouri Class VI Defensive Player of the Year. Killan Smith was the Otis Taylor Award finalist and the Missouri Class VI Offensive Player of the Year. Jay Ross was a finalist for the Thomas A. Simone Award, as well as First Team All-State. Whereas the Eagles also had one player named Third Team All-State, Second Team All-State, six players named First Team All-State, 11 named First Team All-District, and five players named Second Team All-District. Whereas the Missouri State High School Activities Association, also named Eagles head coach, Andy Lierman, Coach of the Year for Class VI. Whereas the Liberty North High School football team exemplifies the spirit, character, and dedication and commitment to excellence for which we all strive, the Board of Commissioners are pleased to recognize them at this time now. Therefore, be it resolved that the Clay County Board of Commissioners, that we extend to each member of the 23 Liberty North Eagles football team our warmest congratulations for their extraordinary efforts on and off the field, and extend our gratitude for the pride they have brought to Clay County. So, congratulations, Coach, to you and your team on your historic season. Your seniors, you know, had a great high school career. I know Nick Saban was visiting you guys, so it looks like some of you guys are going to be taking it to the next level. So, thank you for everything you guys have done, and, you know, we're happy you guys were able to join us tonight.
We will go ahead and open the floor for any other commissioners who wish to comment, and then we will pause for a moment and get some photos with our guests here today, and then we will resume our agenda after that. So Commissioner Johnson, you wish to be recognized?
Thank you, sir. So, I've got three kids that went through Liberty North High School. Actually, my youngest is a senior there now. I've watched, we've watched almost every single football game that you guys have played since 2016. I was there during the, I watched during the Coach Jones year, when Coach Jones came in, and the culture that he sat there. I was at the game in Mizzou when we went to the state championship. You guys were there at the state championship a couple of years ago, and although Coach Jones got us to the dance, didn't bring home, didn't bring home the trophy that time. But seeing you guys here, it's great. None of you guys know who I am, but I know who all you guys are. Number nine, Melvin Lester, right? Middle linebacker, right? Probably one of the greatest, greatest high school football players in the state of Missouri, in the history of the state. I don't know if you guys know that. I'm not kidding. This guy's big, he's fast, he can hit like a train, and he's smart, and he is the most exciting guy to watch play. I mean, it was amazing watching this guy, and I've been watching since he first came to, he's been playing varsity for every year he's been at the school. So, it's amazing. He's been an outstanding, done outstanding job, and he made it fun to watch. What's that, 34? Crunchy? Yeah. Actually, your older brother was playing, I think he was a senior during the other state championship, right? When, it was CBC that beat us, right? And you got a little playing time in that game too, didn't you? So I was in the stands sitting close to your dad on that one. I remember we thought your dad was high at the time. I mean, that guy was all over. He couldn't sit down. He was so excited, he was so jazzed. So, I didn't see him in this game. I was sitting somewhere else apparently. It was fun. It was almost as fun watching your dad in that game as watching you and your brother play. But, okay, watching Crunchy play this, and your brother is, don't tell me, there's Crunchy, Chewy, right? We've got Chewy and Crunchy. You got a younger brother too? What are they calling him?
Creamy.
Creamy. Okay. So they've got Chewy, Crunchy, and Creamy. So you got them all right there. So anyway, so Crunchy, so watching you play has been amazing. So, on the defensive line, or, yeah, defensive lineman, right?
Linebacker.
What's that?
Linebacker.
Oh, linebacker. Okay. That's right. I knew that. Got you mixed up. Okay. So, if you guys have ever seen Troy Polamalu, you guys might not be able to, but Troy Polamalu, who played for the Steelers, he was a safety, but that guy, he wasn't super big, but he was all over the field. He was in on just about every tackle, and he can hit like none other. So watching Crunchy play, oh my goodness, he reminded me of Troy Polamalu. He was in on so many tackles and hitting hard. Matter of fact, the last play of the game at the state championship, you should have seen the hit he laid on the quarterback. It ended the game to the point where they tapped out with three minutes and 15 seconds left in the game. They said, hey, we don't want any more, this is CBC, the dominant team in the state for so long, they're tapping out with three minutes and 15 seconds left because they didn't want anybody else getting hurt in this game. This game was incredible. Watching the defense on, okay, then we got two defensive backs here, right? Trey Snyder, Cole Young. Pick six, right, in the state game. Cole Young? Right? Nice job. So, been watching you guys play too, some amazing football. I'm going on, so the defense alone, most people that watch football, I'm sorry if I'm going off and get a little excited about this, but most people that watch football, they just watch the ball. They watch, they watch the quarterback, they hand it off to a running back, and by the way, you've got a couple amazing running backs too. They just watch where the ball goes. Most people don't pay a lot of attention to the defense. These guys on defense made it so fun to watch the game. Just watching these guys, watching these guys play, okay, who's Melvin going to hit next? You know, just watching, watching Mel line up and watching him read the play, watching these guys kind of through, it's like, bam! It was so fun to watch. Now, not here tonight is Jay Sean, right, Ross? Okay. And I don't know what you did in that state game with him. Did you move him around or something? The edge rushing he did? I've never seen that before. I've never, I mean, he, it was incredible. Anybody that stood between him and the quarterback when he would rush, I felt, that guy didn't want to stand there again. I felt sorry for that guy. He took out so many guys and took out the quarterback a couple times. Actually, I think we went through two of their quarterbacks, injury-wise. But this guy, and I think they took him out of the game, I think it was for targeting or something, but nonetheless, they took him out of the game because he was going to kill somebody. I mean, it was the amount of physicality that the Liberty North defense laid on CBC was incredible, and it was exciting to watch. It was fun. I've never seen a better, and you guys got to know, high school football, to me, is great. There's NFL, and I actually, I watched college for a long time from Southern California. USC was my team, but there's nothing like high school football. And you guys got to understand, football is bigger than you guys. What you guys did is bigger than you guys. For the Liberty North community, I mean, the Liberty North community was in this all year. We were there from your very first game that you lost, at least some at North, right? Which you guys should have won that game, but nonetheless, that was the only loss you had, and you went on to win every single game since then. And to watch you guys play and watch you through the year, and it's really, it's, like I said, none of you guys know who I am, but I know who all you guys are. And most of the Liberty North community knows who all you guys are too, from watching. Friday Night Lights is a big deal, and when we can't go to the games, we stream it on TV. You guys have had a big impact on at least the Liberty North community and somewhat the entire Clay County, certainly the entire Clay County is proud of what you guys have accomplished. But it's fun to watch you guys. It's fun to, and I'm sorry, most of you guys be leaving. Actually, your quarterback will be back next year, Tillman, right? Actually, my daughter's Jaden. She was in your weights class, I think, Coach. Yeah, runner and swimmer. Yeah. So anyways, I'm just so happy for you guys. I want you guys to know that it was a pleasure watching you guys play this year and the years before, but it was, that last game was so fun to watch. I can't imagine what it was like being in it, but so fun to watch, so fun to watch the hits that you guys were laying on people. I don't know if it's okay to say, if that's politically correct to say that or not, but it was fun. The physicality of that game, I've never seen at the high school level, and you guys, you guys did a great job. Coach, you did a great job. The game planning you did, some of the things that you did to change up in the game for that last game, it was amazing. It was fun to watch. And anyways, congratulations to you guys and thanks for what you've done, not only at Liberty North, but for our community, and good luck to all you guys in the future and wherever you end up going. I know number 10, football's not your thing, is it? Aren't you going for baseball or is it basketball? I know you play all three, but you going to play baseball somewhere else? Where are you going?
Tennessee.
Where?
Tennessee.
Tennessee. Melvin, where are you going?
UNLV.
UNLV, that's right. Crunchy?
No, we're junior.
No, you're a junior. That's right. We got you for another year. That's going to be fun. Are you a senior?
Yep.
Cole, where are you going?
I'm going to Central Missouri.
You playing football?
Baseball.
Oh, baseball. So, man, some outstanding, I mean, if you're this good at football, I can only imagine how good you are at baseball. But congratulations to all you guys, and thanks for putting on the show this year. It was fun to watch. And Crunchy, we'll be watching you next year with Tillman. All right, thanks, guys.
Commissioner Wagner.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I'd like to invite you all back anytime you want because I've never seen my colleague this giddy in my life. And so, whenever I need something, I'm calling you up because you might help me out. But all kidding aside, all kidding aside, so I am an Oak Park graduate, and you broke my heart a few weeks ago, but I will say that if my alma mater was to lose, I want to lose to the champions. And boy, you showed up, and now I know why we lost, because my colleague just did like the entire playbook play. So I know, now I even understand that even more. But all kidding aside, as you heard in that resolution that we were about to give you, you made a lot of folks proud, not just at Liberty North, not just in your school district, but all of us here in Clay County. You know, it is funny how high school sports does put the spotlight on a community, and you load it up and you just flip that light on as bright as it can go. And just based on where you all are going, I know you will be successful in whatever enterprise, whether it's this sport or others. You are a champion at heart. You showed it, and I know you're going to continue to show it. So my best to you. I'm glad most of you are gone, so you don't have to play my alma mater again. And for those that are left, take it easy, would you? But congratulations, great job. Thank you.
Richard Lawson.
Yeah, I'm not quite as versed in football as my compatriot over here is, but you have to know how proud all of Clay County is. You know, sometimes you hear about, and I've said this before with other youth things that we've had, but everybody's in fear of what the youth today is like. You're wonderful examples of somebody that dedicates themselves to something and accomplishes what you set out to do. A lot of that credit goes to your coach, but he couldn't have done it alone without all of you. So we're extremely proud, and you've really made an accomplishment because I heard that in the city of Kansas City, part of it not in the Clay County area, they have changed the lights out to be your class colors. Did you know that? I just found it out. I thought that is the neatest thing. So, hey, you're making a splash everywhere. Congratulations to you, best to you going forward, and those of you who are staying, we're looking forward to great things from you again. So, thank you so much, and it's great to have you all here.
If there are no further comments, I will go to Commissioner Withington to close, and then we will get a few photographs and then return to our schedule.
I close.
Very good.
Do you want them to be able to say anything?
Coach, would you like to give us a few words? That's, thank you for, that's a good suggestion.
Absolutely.
Oh, by the way, for anyone else who's willing, wanting to speak tonight, when you come up, please make sure that the button is pushed and the microphone is green. Speak in, tell us your name, and then speak into the microphone. With that, Coach, please proceed.
Andy Lierman, head football coach, Liberty North High School. I just want to say thank you, obviously, to Mr. Withington for inviting us tonight, and to the commission for having us here. Thank you for your kind words and your cheering and support of our program. I've got four young men here. Melvin Lester, number nine, who we just spoke about a little bit. Not only did he have all those accolades, Melvin started as a freshman and did not miss one single snap of football in four years. Played 52 games. That might be a, all the records that he might have, that might be one of the biggest records that probably nobody will ever know about, but pretty impressive. He's going to UNLV, like we talked about. Ryan Hudson, playing linebacker four. Trey Snyder going to play baseball at Tennessee, like you talked about. Cole Young going to play UCM. And so, these are just four representatives of our football team. We have 121 kids, 10 through 12, so a bunch of great young men that are part of our football program. We have several assistant coaches who make my job a lot easier and make it really work behind the scenes that don't get to stand here in front of you tonight, but they do a great job for us. We have a great administration at Liberty North High School and within the school district that just do a great job of supporting us as well. And our community has been incredible. And so, we're very, very blessed. We're thankful. We are obviously excited and still a bit on cloud nine as we continue to kind of celebrate this a couple of weeks out, and we'll continue to do that the next few days. And we just thank you guys again for having us here and honoring us this evening.
Before we break for photographs, if the four players could stand up and any parents or family that are here could stand with them, then we'll go ahead and get ready to do the photos. So please stand. And any parents or other family that are here with the players? Okay. For that, we will stand at ease for a moment, and we will go ahead and get some photos. Commissioner, you have the resolution at hand. Thank you.
UNLV, that's not anything to sneeze at.
No, he's going to be a running rebel.
Whoa.
With that, we will resume our agenda for this evening as amended. Next, our public comments. Are there any members of the public wishing to comment on any issues not on this evening's agenda? Seeing none. That brings us to our consent agenda. Administrator?
The consent agenda allows the commission to act upon items considered to be routine and approved in one motion. These may include items that have been reviewed by the commission in a prior session. There will be no separate discussion unless a commission requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. There are two items on tonight's consent agenda. First item is commission meeting minutes from November 30th, December 6th, and December 7th, along with Resolution 2023-371, which is consideration of approving invoice payments for Clay County from November 30th through December 8th. There are 697 invoices for a total of $3,330,038.80.
Is there a motion related to this evening's consent agenda? Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. Move to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Motion has been made for the approval of this evening's consent agenda. Discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner.
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
That brings us to this evening's regular agenda. First item on this agenda is 2023-372. Administrator?
Resolution 2023-372 is consideration of approving invoice payments for the Clay County Prosecutor's Office from November 30th through December 8th. There are 15 invoices totaling $6,705.86.
Is there a motion on the, on 372? Commissioner Wagner?
I think you move to approve 2023-372.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2023-372. Discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner.
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson.
I recuse myself.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Motion passes. Five in favor, one recusal.
Next item on this evening's regular agenda is 2023-374. Administrator?
Resolution 2023-374 is consideration of a conditional use permit for rental cabins, and Planner Shane Spees is here to provide information to the commission.
Please proceed.
Shane Spees, Clay County Planner. Just before I get into this case, I want to highlight our, what I have up on the screen there. It's our Clay County Compass. I'm sure you guys have heard about it before. It deals with our comprehensive plan. We're still looking for more surveys to be filled out, so if you guys would be willing to share, just anybody, even in the audience as well, to share, to get the word out for this. So, thank you. All right, so for the first case, we got, this is a proposed conditional use permit for rental cabins. Currently, the property consists of about 40 acres, zone agricultural. This property also has an existing conditional use permit that was renewed earlier this year, I believe in April. That was the, it was an event venue. It's called the Tobacco Barn Farm, and the access for this will come off of 33 Highway. The proposal is to build four to six rental cabins. That would be approximately 384 square feet. They would contain one to four occupants per cabin, open year-round, and no more than 30 consecutive stays, and then also have their enforced quiet hours as well. These are some of the potential ideas or renderings for kind of what the applicant is looking for. This is your surrounding area. There in the red is the subject parcel. You can see a lot of large agricultural land, along with some other residential zoning as well. This proposal falls under the rural density tier to comprehensive plan. These are our five conditional use permit criteria that we deal with, with all of our conditional use permit cases. Both staff and planning and zoning commission felt that the conditional use permit criteria was met. Staff has received no opposition leading up to the planning and zoning meeting or during. We published this case in the newspaper, posted a sign on site, and sent a total of 18 letters to adjoining properties. We have not received any objections from outside agencies, and planning and zoning commission voted seven, unanimously seven to zero to recommend an approval with eight conditions. The applicant has agreed with these conditions, which include issuing the conditional use permit for 11 years, and that the conditional use permit may be revoked based on substantial code violations. The reason for the 11-year code violations. Um, the reason for the eleven-year, um, issuing it for eleven years is so we can try to line this up with the one they just got, uh, approved with in April, so we can combine them as they, uh, when they come up for their next renewal. So, uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions the Commission might have and the applicants, if present.
Are there any questions? Commissioner Wagner?
Uh, thank you. Um, and, and, and forgive me. Uh, I usually deal with city-related stuff when it comes to, comes to these sorts of matters. And so, my, my question is, the, the owner will be, the owner of the property will be on-site to service the, the cabins or what is the, um, how, how does that work?
Yeah, so from my understanding, it's, uh, the property is their, um, it's the mother of, of, of the owner that owns the property.
I see.
So, um, you know, I, I think the intention there is to, you know, this is a wedding venue, so the idea is for wedding goers to have a place to stay after, um, but also be able to have that Airbnb
Sure.
style.
Do you, is the applicant here, uh, this evening?
Yes, the applicant.
Uh, I tell you what, those, uh, let's go ahead and, and maybe that would be a good ask of the applicant.
Oh, that's fine.
Primary source. But please proceed with your questions.
No, that's, that's really it. I just wanted to verify that ownership or representative, representative of ownership is on-site, uh, as those cabins are being rented. And, uh, so whoever wishes to answer that question, I'll let them do so at the proper time. Thank you.
Commissioner Withington? Um, did, I'm sorry, Commissioner Lawson, your light went off. Were you also wanting to comment?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry. Uh, Commissioner Withington, you are recognized.
Have we received any opposition or anything to this?
No, we haven't received any, uh, written or, um, calls or anything like that for opposition, and including the meeting, no opposition.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think this is fine. Um, I plan on voting for it, but I just wanted to make sure there was no opposition.
Yeah, Commissioner Lawson?
Yeah. Uh, the, I've been to this facility many times. Uh, it's one of the most beautiful and the best run that you could ever look for. They do weddings primarily. Um, I think it's great that they're adding the cabins as well. But it's not a place that you should, anyone should have any concern about. The people that run it are exemplary, and the facility is fantastic.
See no further comments. Is the applicant present and would they wish to comment? Certainly, you're not required to comment, but we would certainly be happy to hear from you. And also, if there are any questions that might be more appropriately addressed to you, we would like to do that. So, uh, your choice, though.
Of course.
And as I'd mentioned before, please make sure the light is, of course, green, but identify yourselves and then make any comments you'd care to make, and then I will recognize, uh, any questions from the Commission. Thank you.
Yes. Uh, my name's Julie Cox. Um, do I state my address as well?
Excuse me?
Do I state my address as well?
I don't know that that's really necessary. I just, your two names, I think, good enough for the moment.
Okay. Um, so this is our, our family farm. Uh, my mom lives on the property. We live on an adjoining, um, property down the road. So, um, we've had the, the venue for, uh, about six years now. Um, so just kind of a, a nice addition to, um, you know, not only wedding guests, but if people are coming, um, just kind of filling a, a void for, for places to stay, for, for people to try to get away. And, um, yeah, so hopefully a nice addition to the, to the county.
Are there any questions or comments of the applicant? Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to comment on this issue? Seeing none, is there a motion related to twenty-two-three-three-seventy-four? Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. Moved to approve twenty-two-three-three-seven-four.
Motion has been made for the approval of twenty-two-three-three-seventy-four. Further discussion?
And that's with the box checked, approved?
Oh, uh, with, uh, amend my motion so that the box is checked, approved, uh, where necessary.
And in restating the motion, I will say with the box, uh, checked, approved. Thank you for the, uh, that's what I tend to forget. Uh, with that, uh, discussion, seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero.
Thank you. That brings us to our next issue, which is twenty-two-three-three-seventy-five. Administrator?
Resolution twenty-two-three-dash-three-seven-five is the consideration of a conditional use permit for Chasen Wings Kennel. And Planner Spees is here to provide information.
Please proceed.
Uh, Shane Spees, Clay County Planner. Uh, this is a proposed conditional use permit for a kennel. Uh, currently, the property, um, sets at roughly twenty-one acres, is zone agricultural. Uh, there is an existing house and accessory building on the property, um, and the, the access comes from Plattsburgh Road. Uh, the proposed kennel would run out of the existing accessory structure. Um, it would consist of a total of eighteen kennels. All would be indoor. Um, the purpose of the kennels is to provide obedience, um, obedience and waterfowl training, along with just general boarding. The operational hours are Monday through Saturday, seven-thirty a.m. to six p.m., and Sunday, two p.m. to four p.m. Um, all those are by appointment only. Um, I would also like to note, uh, that this applicant, the applicant is licensed through the State of Missouri's Department of Agricultural for, uh, running a commercial animal care facility. Uh, this is the, um, current pictures of it. Uh, you can see some of the outdoor kennels there. The, from my understanding, that those no longer exist. They're all indoors now. Uh, this is your, your surrounding area. You can see, um, to the west there is a more, uh, densely populated, um, subdivision for unincorporated Clay County. It's a Oak Brook. Um, and then you can see a lot of other large agricultural property there as well. Uh, this proposal falls under the urban services tier of the comprehensive plan. Um, again, these are the five conditional use permit criteria that we deal with. All of our, uh, conditional use permit cases, both staff and planning and zoning commission felt that, um, these, uh, the conditional use permit was, criteria was met, excuse me. Um, staff has received no opposition leading up to or during the planning and zoning meeting. Uh, we published this case in the newspaper, again, posted a sign out on site, sent a total of fifty letters, um, to the adjoining properties. Uh, we have not received any, uh, objections from outside agencies, um, or during, uh, the planning and zoning commission. Uh, they voted seven, um, zero to recommend an approval with ten conditions. The applicant has agreed with these conditions, which include, um, issuing the conditional use permit for ten years, um, and that the kennel areas shall be completely enclosed or screened so they cannot be viewed from other locations, other residential locations than the subject parcel. I'd be happy to answer any questions the Commission might have and the applicant is present.
Thank you very much. The applicant is present. Um, questions or comments? Seeing none. If the applicant is present, uh, if you would like to speak, please come forward and do so. Again, you are not required to, but certainly we would like to hear from you. And, uh, that way, if there are any questions appropriately made to the applicant, then they would be here to answer them. So, would the applicant care to speak?
Thank you for taking your time, guys. Chase Quarles, uh, I've never done this before, so, uh, just tell you a little bit about the business and, and stuff like that.
Whatever you think would be relevant to, you know, certainly whatever you have to say, we'd be happy to hear.
Okay, so we've been, uh, running for about five years now. Uh, just found out about the conditional use permit and appropriately made, uh, a B-line to get that started with KIP. And, uh, we've had no objection, um, that neighborhood to the west of us. Uh, I bet twelve of them use us rather for boarding or for, for training. Uh, and every time we've asked them if they could hear anything, and, and they said no, not compared to all the dogs in the neighborhood. So, um, but we, I have been seeing that there is a massive need in Clay County for boarding, as boarding facilities have shut down in Clay County due to lack of workers. So, um, I know that this community does need to serve with, with more boarding facilities to go on vacation and such.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions of the applicant? Commissioner Wagner?
Um, thank you. Moved to approve twenty-two-three-three-seven-five.
Motion's been made for the approval of three, uh, twenty-two-three-three-seventy-five. Is there any further discussion?
Check the box.
Oh, and check the box for approval.
See, I'm depending on you to keep me on track here, Scott.
I'm, I'm still dealing with the giddiness over here on the other side of the room. It's, it's really throwing me off, but...
Checking a different box. Motion's been made for the approval of twenty-two-three-three-seventy-five. It's the box marked, approved, so checked. Any further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero.
Our companion issues, that would be twenty-two-three-three-seventy-six and three-seventy-seven. Administrator?
Resolution twenty-two-three-dash-three-seven-six and Resolution twenty-two-three-dash-three-seven-seven are companion resolutions for the consideration of rezoning and approving a conditional use permit for eight-four-zero-seven State Route ninety-two LLC. And Planner Spees is here to provide information.
Please proceed.
Shane Spees, uh, Clay County Planner. Um, this is a proposed, proposed conditional use permit and rezoning for a recreational vehicle storage facility. Uh, currently, the property consists of roughly five acres in a zone, um, C-two. This is, uh, this is, the property is the former Ectonville Gas Station, um, that has access from ninety-two Highway. Commission, uh, briefly heard this case back in October, um, but staff requested that this case be remanded back to planning and zoning commission due to the change of the site plan. Um, so, yeah, the, again, the proposal, what we're doing with the, with the rezoning, we're gonna rezone it to, from C-two to C-three. This is gonna allow it to be, come up to code with our land development code, um, to meet, uh, where they would be allowed to do that recreational vehicle storage. Uh, so this is the, uh, the current state of the, of the gas station. It's in pretty rough shape. Uh, from my understanding, the applicants have been cleaning and, and fixing up the doors and such. Uh, so it's looking a lot better, um, already. Uh, these are some, uh, renderings of, of the possible new facilities. And we got the, the old site plan, which is the one to your left, and then the new site plan to your right. Um, you can see the big changes there, is, uh, they're removing one of the, the gas station building, um, and turning their, their vehicle storage to a vertical, and so there's horizontal, and also extending onto the old, uh, one of the old storage units as well. Um, this proposal falls on, or this is surrounding area, excuse me. Uh, you see a lot of large ag land, uh, obviously ninety-two highway there, E-highway, um, and some other, um, uh, larger subdivisions. Uh, this proposal falls under the urban services tier of the comprehensive plan. Again, these are the same five conditional use permit criteria. Uh, the rezoning criteria was attached to your, the, the transmittal. Um, we deal with these criteria, again, with any of our conditional use permit cases. Uh, both staff and planning and zoning commission felt that the conditional use, uh, criteria was met. Same with the rezoning. Uh, staff has received no opposition leading up or during the planning and zoning meeting. I know with the initial planning and zoning meeting, uh, we did have quite a bit of questions about this. There are more concerns, but I believe those were, uh, handled with, uh, the applicant, the neighbors. Um, but the, uh, we, we did send you letters addressing the circumstances to the, the changing of the site plan, um, just to be sure these, the same neighbors that got the initial letters were informed on what was happening. Um, and those, that, again, included the old and the new site plan. Uh, we did not receive any objections from outside agencies, and a planning and zoning commission, uh, voted unanimously, uh, at both of our planning and zoning meetings, uh, to approve with eleven conditions. The applicant has agreed with these conditions, which include issuing the conditional use permit for fifteen years and a six-foot-tall fence with locking gate is required around, surrounding the facility. Uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions and the applicants are here.
Are there any questions? Seeing none. It, did you say the applicant was here or not here?
Yes.
If the applicant would like to make comment?
Uh, yes, sir. My name's Adam Tholen. Um, I'm one of the partners in the deal. Um, we originally had the one on the left. We just found that the, the new design with the bays at an angle, it's easier to park in them, and that's why we redesigned it. So, um, we did start cleaning up some of it. Um, we are scheduled to tear down the gas station. Um, they've got the power disconnected and stuff, but we're just trying to clean that area up and, and stop the vandalism. So, we, we pulled, right now, everything's piled, waiting for the gas station to be hauled off. So if you've gone by there, that was all the stuff that was in the unit. So, um, we are local owners, so we'll be around to manage the property and things of that sort.
Okay. Are there any questions of, of the applicant? Commissioner Wagner?
Uh, thank you. Moved to approve twenty-two-three-three-seven-six, twenty-twenty, and twenty-two-three-three-seven-seven, with all appropriate boxes marked approved.
You know, we're gonna get the hang of this before the end of the evening.
You know, uh, it's, it's the last one, so I gotta get that one right, so...
Motion been made for the approval of twenty-two-three-three-seven-six and twenty-two-three-three-seven-seven, with the box marked, uh, with the box approved checked. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero.
That concludes our regular agenda. Uh, next on our agenda is, uh, our discussion items. We have one item under discussion. Administrator?
Yes, um, well, we have the additional item under discussion, um, that was added in the amended agenda.
Of course. Uh, so let's go ahead and start with the one that is, that was scheduled, and then go to the next one. Or I don't really have a particular order in mind, so whatever you feel best to move the flow.
It's certainly up to you. If you go with the one that is currently, um, listed on the agenda, um, which is discussion, continued discussion of the Kansas City Trap Shooters Association. Um, Commission will recall, we've had several discussions about, uh, the cleanup at this facility at the last meeting discussion that the Commission had. Um, there was a request to have both our engineer, uh, who had done a study on this, along with the Corps of Engineer, um, and the Association to be here. Um, so I'm gonna introduce John Davis, just to talk briefly about all of that. Unfortunately, we have one of our guests, um, the Corps of Engineer cannot be here tonight, but we have our other guests here, and I'll turn it over to John Davis, who is our Deputy Parks Director.
Please proceed.
John Davis, Deputy Parks Director. Uh, a few months ago, or not a few months ago, a few weeks ago, we were, had continued discussion on Kansas City Trap Range Cleanup. Um, part of that discussion was wanting to know how the engineering firm, Burns and McDonald, figured out their, uh, formula and how they came up with how much debris is on the site.
Uh, could you speak just a little more loudly, please?
Sorry?
That's okay. Thank you.
Um, it's basically a few weeks, you know, we discussed about how Burns McDonald Engineering decided how much debris was on-site. We have Brian Wise with Burns and McDonald here, um, and he can explain a little bit more of how they determined this.
Hello, everybody. I'm Brian Wise, Civil Engineer with Burns and McDonald. Um, so
So, we were hired to do, put together a work plan for removing that material and understand there was some questions on how we came up with the overall quantity, so was just gonna explain. I wish I would have brought some visuals, that probably would be more helpful, but I'll try and just describe. So, we had a survey of the, of the whole park done before this, so we have topography of the surface of the property, and so using that and referencing the aerial imagery, seeing where the material was located, the mass of the material, we created surfaces in, in computer-aided drafting AutoCAD Civil 3D. So, we did, we had, we have what the existing surface is, the existing topography, and then we created, and we saw where the material, the waste material was kind of created, a ledge on top of the existing topography. So, we kind of went in and created a surface of what we thought the, the, before the, the waste material was there, what the existing topography would have looked like. And this was a guess, it was just, you know, our, our opinion on what the natural topography would have looked like under the existing surface, and then we used that Civil 3D program to calculate the amount of material from the top surface to the bottom surface. So, that's kind of how we came up, and we created this surface conservatively because we don't want you all to, to short-budget a project. So, that's where we came up with the nine thousand cubic yards of material from that calculation. There's other ways to calculate it. There certainly could be less material if you just do, you know, what, what you can see and assume, you know, you can assume whatever depth you want, and so there could be, is, you know, we did another calculation a different way and came up with six thousand or seven, six or seven thousand cubic yards. So, we come up with the range, but we always want to present the most conservative case so that you don't get halfway done and, and run out of money, so that's kind of the, the explanation of how we came up with the volume.
Okay. A discussion, Commissioner Lawson?
Yeah, so you did kind of a eyeball type of a thing. You did not drill down into the bed?
No, no.
To see how deep it really was?
No. We did not do any subsurface investigation, no.
Thank you.
Further discussions, comments, or questions? Okay, seeing none, is? That's, yes, why, because none for this particular, thank you.
Sure.
Is there anyone else wishing to join in our discussion? Administrator, could you go ahead and make comment on the Army Corps and their lack of presence?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
Could you make, could you go ahead and fill the commission in on why the Army Corps was not, is not here this evening?
Yes, so the, and actually, I'll let Mr. Davis speak to that, because he's had the conversation with them.
Very good.
The project manager for Kansas City District has been transferred to Clinton Lake, so right now, the Smithville Lake Project is shorthanded, and they didn't have enough staff to attend, so they had to cancel at the last minute today.
One of the questions I had, and I don't know that there is an answer to this, but was if we were to put this off to next week, would, would they be able to make that? And I don't know that the, that staff has had the opportunity, the timeline, to be able to nail that down, because we would like to hear from the Army Corps, but we certainly don't want to, we would want to make sure that whatever we scheduled, that would be, that they would be able to attend, so do you have any comments on that?
I don't, as if, they canceled about noon today, so I didn't get a chance to ask again. I can certainly follow up first thing in the morning.
Yeah, I understood it was rather short notice, and, you know, that, that happens sometimes.
Certainly, if, if it is the desire of the commission to hear directly from the Corps, then what we can certainly do is extend invitation, you meet every Thursday, to see if we can't find a Thursday that will work for them to be before the commission to answer your questions.
I think that is probably, and I, we'll go ahead and continue the discussion, but before we leave this discussion, I would like to make sure that we have consensus from the commission on that, and any other point that might come up that we might wish, so that we can go ahead and do all of our consensus building at the end of the discussion. With that, Commissioner Lawson, I believe you were seeking recognition.
Yeah, you know, I'm all for the Corps to come up and, and do their thing, but you've got some experts here from, from the KCTA, and, you know, here, the gentleman is an engineer, so I give him great respect, but these people can speak a little bit more directly to the actual field and how they know what amount is there, so I think we need to give them the opportunity to talk, number one, and give their inputs some credibility. I mean, they know better than anybody else, they practically live up there, so I'd like them to have the opportunity to speak on behalf of the KCTA.
They, they do, that was, in fact, that's where I extended them that invitation, and I was certainly extended again, but I don't believe we want to compel anybody. If you want to speak, please come on up, yeah, I mean, I, I'd said that, I'd, I hope that that was not unclear, but.
They misunderstood, I think.
Okay, yeah.
John, come up.
When I said, yeah, anybody who would care to speak on it, you were obviously included.
Yeah, thank you. Randall Crawford from formerly president of the Kansas City Trap Shooter Association, and been involved with it since day one, starting in nineteen eighty-five. You know, what, what I've heard this evening is that, that you have an estimate from Burns McDonald, that they've come up with nine thousand cubic yards, but are also telling you their estimate could be as much as thirty-three percent less than that. We arrived at our estimate based upon, for the most part, actual targets thrown up there, and that's how we come up with the number of targets are there, just as we went through the last time. We know how many targets we've thrown, thirty-seven million, a little over, about an average of a million per year. Based upon the calculations of Burns McDonald at the nine thousand cubic yards, we would have to throw two-point-eight million targets per year. That has never, ever happened up there, and probably never will happen up there. So, that, just kind of to reiterate what we'd said before, based on the targets that we've purchased and that we've sold and shot up there, there can't be that much cubic feet or that many tonnage, I think we're talking twelve, twelve thousand six hundred tons the last time versus forty-four hundred tons that the KCTA had calculated. So, really don't have anything new to add, but other, just kind of point out that, you know, what Burns and McDonald has provided you is an estimate as well, and by, by their own statement tonight, it could be substantially less than what they've estimated. Based upon our actual targets thrown, we think it's even substantially more or less than that.
Very good. Before I go to questions from other commissioners, just to verify, I think I know the answer to this, and that is, the only, the only clay pigeons are the only, the only materials there are brought in through your, through purchase through your association, nobody can bring in their own, their own items.
Yes, that's absolutely correct.
They would be exclusively what you would show on your books as purchased.
Yes, and as I admit, I don't know if I mentioned it the last time or not, but the KCTA also sells pallets of targets to other small gun clubs in the area. So, it's not a lot, but, but there would be actually less targets out there on the ground. If everything we brought onto the property was laying out in front of the traps, that would be a little bit different number, but we didn't actually put everything out front because we sold pallets to other gun clubs. So, there's not quite this many out there as we actually purchased.
Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. Not really a question, but just more of an observation, I suppose. It, it strikes me that the, as we've talked about before, based on Burns and McDonald's original suggestion, the money that we have today would not cover that suggestion, that suggested area, and it just seems to me, especially since we do not have core samples to even talk about how deep some of this stuff is, if the question is, how will we spend our money, I, I tend to think that there is an area that both the study that Burns and McDonald has done, as well as the observations of KCTA, would suggest, we know that at least right here, we have something that needs to be cleaned up.
Correct.
I, I, I tend to think that the, you know, the, the reality of numbers suggests really what the total amount of, of area should be, but I am not an engineer, and I have not shot a thing out at that range, so I am not the one to say how much there is and what, what there is, but it does seem to me that there's an area of agreement, I think, where we think something really is, and if that is where we concentrate, I, I wonder, whenever we see the next person who fills in at Smithville Lake, perhaps there's, there's a conversation that can be had as to whether or not that's good enough. But I, you know, I, my experience with these sorts of things has always been about, what are the assumptions that you start with? And if those assumptions that you start with turn out to be wrong, then what gets kicked out will also be wrong. So, at least in this case, whether those assumptions are right or wrong and creates the discrepancy, there are, there is something that we do know, because we can go out there and see it.
Sure, it's there.
And so, to me, ultimately, you know, we, we can, we can have the Corps come in, I'm certainly happy to do that, but I think where I fall ultimately is, there's an area of agreement where there's something is, to me, that's where you start, and then from there, hopefully that may prove out to be enough. I'll just, and there, and appreciate you coming back for what, the third, third time?
Second.
Second? Well, maybe I'm anticipating your future.
Maybe, maybe a third time, I don't know.
Appreciate.
We're happy to come back.
Appreciate you being here.
We'd welcome you all to come up there. If you haven't been up there, we certainly welcome you to come up there and take a look at the place. Thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Thanks, Ed. It's all right, everyone's dead, I don't have any questions for you.
Okay.
So, these, my comments are just, I'm, I'm ready to go ahead and move this item forward personally. That being said, if any other commissioner wants some more time to wait for the Corps or what have you, I'm, you know, that's fine, too. In my view, if there is less than what Burns and Mac originally projected, great, then it's going to cost less to take it to the landfill. So, either way, I think we have consensus that we gotta remove it. I think we could probably just go ahead and move, allocate the money to, to do that process. Hopefully, we're gonna experience some savings at the end of it, once we confirm that there was less out than originally projected. So, I'm ready to go on this one, if y'all like. That's my view.
Thank you. Commissioner Lawson?
Yep. How, how many of you up here, I would ask, all my friends and my fellow commissioners, have you, who has shot trap? Okay, good. For those that you haven't, here's what it looks like. That's a target. This is what is left after. And not because I shoot up there, you know, I got off the board, advised of council, and, and because of this job, I hardly ever get up there anymore, but, you know, these men that are here and ladies that is here, they live at that damn place, and they sit on the board, and they are, Randall, the gentleman who spoke just a moment ago, he is, he has been there since that building was erected and was, ran it all this time. He was religious about keeping records. I, all of you know me well enough by now, and some of you wish you didn't, but those of you who love me, we know that, that I always do what's best for the county. I try very hard to do what's best for the county, and, and I continue to want to do that. I, I feel as though what Randall has said and the records that were kept, and we kept records, every time somebody comes up and pays, you know that they're going to go out there, pay for twenty-five or fifty, whatever they're going to shoot. They go out there, that's what they shoot, we've got a record of it. At the end of the month, you can go back and look and say, this is how many targets went. Now, there could be a couple that got thrown that, you know, just by accident or whatever, but the, for the most part, they're religious about it. If they weren't, I'll tell you that they weren't. I'm, I'm with Commissioner Carpenter. I, I think, let's get this darn show on the road. Let's do it, and, and we've, it's got to be done. They've made the commitment to us that from forward, going forward, I think next, is it next year that they start the targets that are biodegradable?
Please come on up and, yeah, use the mic, that way we can catch you on the audio.
Yeah, Randall Crawford again. It's not the biodegradable target. We've confirmed through White Flyer, that target is no longer available. It's off the market, you might be able to buy it on eBay somewhere, but it's no longer manufactured. Then they went to a blackout target, and now then they're going to an eco-target, and they anticipate having that out in sometime in twenty twenty-four. It'll be introduced over different parts of the country at different times. We're anxious to get it as soon as we can. Our understanding is, once the eco-target's there, cleanup should no longer be an issue at all. This is a tree pitch, a pitch derived from trees instead of from petroleum, totally environmentally, there's no environmental issue at all whatsoever with it, and it's supposed to, it's going to degrade back into the ground in about ten years.
Okay. And I know that, that's the kind we used at home, and if you go out into my pasture today, you won't see a target anywhere. They just degrade into the system. Obviously, they're not harmful to, you know, go kill animals or anything of that nature, so they're not going to cause any problem with the water. So, then, say, say that you don't get those targets until March, and, and quickly, they start getting this all cleaned up. Then for those targets that are not the eco-targets, how will you remove those targets?
Probably the same way that, that you're going to remove them. You're gonna have to have a front loader and go out there and put them in a truck and haul them away.
Okay, great, great. So, that's a commitment from them to us. They'll take care of it once it's cleaned up, because they're going to keep on shooting.
And I think you wanted an MOU from us, and would be happy to, to do that.
Yeah, and, and anytime any of you want to go up there and really look at the facility, it's something to be proud of. A couple of weekends ago, they had a youth shoot up there. It was freezing cold, and it was rainy, and so I think there were less kids than normally, but we, we've had three five-hundred kids up there that are shooting. It, it's a great service. We've got Carney, Smithville, Holt, Lathrop, all the kids, all around, have a, have a team, and in fact, the Carney kids, I believe it was last year, won the state, did they not? So, you know, they're, it's, it's a great facility, and it's one that's used for family entertainment, I would have to say, and really focused on the youth, very much so. So, anyway, that's all I got.
Thank you.
Before you leave, is there, is there some way that you could provide us with kind of the specs for these, just so we have them on our files, that, that would indicate they're biodegradable, or whatever the proper term is, nature of these particular targets?
I don't know that we have those in our possession, but we can request those from White Flyer.
That would be great.
Yeah.
It's, it's not the, the thing is, I just think it would be a good thing for us to have on file.
We don't have, yeah, we don't have any now, but we'd have to go back to White Flyer to get specs for that.
I don't, you know, I don't see this being necessarily this hangs on that issue, I think it would just be a, a nice add. Commissioner Johnson, you're seeking recognition?
Yeah, so, the calculations you made on the debris out there is based on the number of targets that you bought.
Correct.
So, you're not, you're not considering anything else that's in there, such as the wadding or even shells?
No, there's no shells in there, there's no casings in there at all.
Not at all.
Okay, not at all.
So, the pictures that I saw, there were some in there. I'm not sure what those pictures are from, but the pictures that I saw of the mounds, there was, there were some shells in there, definitely shells in there.
Out in front of the trap houses, I don't know why there would be any shells out there.
Yeah, neither do I, but that's why I'm just wondering why they're in the pictures.
Yeah, I guess I'd have to see the pictures, because I just can't imagine why there would be wads out there.
When Burns and McDonald, you guys looked at it, right? Did you see any shells out there, out there? Yeah, that's what I thought. Yeah, so I think there are shells in there as well. The, the pictures that I saw, that I think John provided, John Davis provided, if I'm not mistaken, there's definitely shells in there, which concerns me, I don't know how those are getting in there, because those should be cleaned up after every, after every shoot. But nonetheless, I, I think the, the estimation based on targets alone is probably going to be low, just because you're going to have debris and dirt and everything else, gonna make, there's no way to pick up just the, the clay pigeons. Hold that up again, that target up again. And just for the record, is that what the target looks like after you shoot at it? I'm just kidding.
I'll show you that.
Yeah.
You want to pass those down, or would just, everybody get a chance to look at them?
But I imagine that, that, that they're, they're not just going to pick up just the tar, I mean, there's going to be dirt and stuff mixed in with it, so it's not just the way the target.
I would assume on the file, get down to the very bottom, I think, I wouldn't think there'd be a lot of dirt if we have an operator that knows what they're doing.
Yeah, so I, I haven't looked at the hill myself, I just have seen the pictures, and the pictures, the concern, like, there's more to, I don't need it. There's more to it than just the, than just the pigeons. So, nonetheless, I, I, I've said this before, I'm not happy about this at all, I'm not happy about this much money of taxpayer dollars going to clean this up. I don't know what the alternative is, though, except for that we, you know, and like Commissioner Carpenter said, you know, if we gotta do it, let's just get it done, but I'd like to get it done as cheap as possible, and, and whatever that price is, I'd like it as cheap as possible. Just because the government's paying for it doesn't mean we, the government should get charged an arm and a leg, which kind of happens in the past. I think we go out and find whoever can give us the best deal on getting this stuff out of there, and that's how we get it out of here, because I don't know what else we can do, but I, it just, the whole thing throws me the wrong way, that that's a lot of money, that's a lot of streets that we can repay with six hundred thousand dollars, but nonetheless, that's all I have.
I did have an additional question. If there are shell casings or, or other materials in there, does that contribute to the cost of cleanup, or is that a, pretty much a neutral kind of a, of a factor when it comes to cleaning up what's there now? So, if there is- So if there is, are those shells, is that something that would add to our cost?
I'll be honest with you, I would have to see the shells out there. I mean, I can't think of any possible reason why shells would be out in front of the trap houses.
I was kind of mystified that myself.
Yeah, I mean, because our line's 16 yards behind the trap, that's the closest as a shooter ever gets. Shells are ejected backwards. So there, and shooters are not allowed to go out in front of the traps. So I just, I mean, I'm not saying it hasn't happened, but I just can't imagine why there are empty plastic shells or paper shells laying out there. There's wads out there, sure. But we do try to clean those up as well.
Yeah, that was something that I didn't, again, I've been out there before. I actually went out there with my younger daughter, and it certainly is a caution to anybody when, she was younger, so it certainly cautioned anybody who wanted to date her to pretty much toe the line because she knew how to, she took right to it. So that was a good thing. I was very encouraged by that. But no, I just wanted to ask that question. Commissioner Lawson, and then after your comment, I'm going to see if there's any more members of the public, and then I'm going to try to come up with a consensus that we can task a staff with. So Commissioner?
The only thing I was going to say, as we shoot, like Randall said, you break open your gun, the shell goes flying backwards. Now, as soon as that's over, as soon as those, the majority of us, I would say that shoot up there regularly, do our own shells. So we don't let them fly backwards. We grab them and put them in a pouch. And so they're not even any shells the majority of the time. But like when the kids are up there and they buy the shells, you know, then it ejects backwards. When they're through shooting, then the staff goes out right then and picks up all the shells, throws them in the trash can. So there's, if there is a shell out there, I don't know how the heck it can get out there on the other side of the trap house, but, you know, any of you go up there and walk that field when nobody's shooting, and you can see that there's no shells out there. There can't be. I don't know how they
From ourselves?
We are, because we would come forward and have you authorize the ARPA funding that we have set aside for this project so that we could then begin to start the cleanup. I would make a suggestion for the commission, because what I've heard here tonight is, an MOU with the association, that they'll start cleaning up after the cleanup is done. I would encourage the commission to ask the association to start cleaning up now. I don't know why they would continue to keep adding to the debris field that we are going to have to clean up. So I don't know that the cleanup has to be completely done before they are responsible for their debris, would be my recommendation.
Okay. I mean, there are two basic issues. One of them, the main one, is, should we go forward with that and perhaps along the lines that the administrator has spoken about? I don't know that there's any appetite on the part of the commission to delay this any further in hopes that we can get comment from the Army Corps. I'm not sure that's really a constructive. Is that pretty much consensus of the commission? Okay, so is it the consensus of the commission, then, that we instruct Administrator to go forward along the lines that she talked about and bring that to us whenever it's ready to go ahead and take action on, hopefully in the next week or two, but whatever your timeline is, if you could advise us on that? I'm sorry, just to go forward with it, along those lines, that might be, putting time constraints is probably not a good idea.
I think for staff, certainly, we can bring the ARPA designation forward very quickly. That could be next week. But I would also talk to the counselor about, I think there is appropriate to draft an MOU, which we would want to send to the association for their review and then come back to the commission. So that may not be ready as quickly as authorizing the funds.
I'm sorry, I was probably expressing some of my own impatience on the issue as well. Anyway, Commissioner Withington, you wish to be recognized.
Yeah, I would just like to say, if this costs less than what we're budgeting, I would really like staff to look for some projects in the Western District that we can do. Most of our ARPA funds have been spent in the Eastern District. Western District pays taxes too, so I want to make sure the Western District gets some money too.
That would be the other, although it's a concern, I think that crossed my mind, and that is, I don't see this as being an extensive timeline, but I would want to make sure that any monies that were not expended did not exceed our timeline. And I don't think it would, that would exceed our timeline to be able to allocate those to other projects. Certainly, I would rather not return any money to the federal government if humanly possible.
Just recognizing to the commission that this is one that fits into one of those categories of infrastructure, which would be for stormwater. So, you know, we can move between categories, but this is not lost revenue. So it is more restrictive on how we use it, but we will certainly, as the project is done, hopefully, and under budget, then, you know, we'll be coming back to the commission probably the first quarter, early in the first quarter of next year, to talk about where are we with all the ARPA projects and how does the funding look, and are there some opportunities for some other projects?
Very good. Does that express the consensus of the commission? Seem to be getting head nods all the way around. Do you feel as though you have sufficient information to go forward? Thank you, Administrator. With that, that is, that concludes this discussion item. We have one further that was also added to the agenda, so if you could introduce that, Administrator?
Yes, thank you for amending the agenda for consideration. So this request came to me at lunch today, and the request came to the City of Liberty yesterday, and they've been working on it. So we're very excited, and I think we heard that this evening, about celebrating the Liberty Football Team and what a great job they did in getting the state championship. So there is a desire to do and continue that celebration. On Wednesday, December 20, at 6:00 p.m., they have requested, and they are working with the City of Liberty, they're going to be staging at their fire station. It'll be the football team, it'll be the band, it will be the cheerleaders, and there'll be sort of a parade coming from that fire station down Kansas Avenue to here at the, right in front of Liberty City Hall, where their Christmas tree is, for sort of a celebration and a pep rally. The overspill, obviously, everyone who's going to be here will then be on the plaza of the Rooney Justice Center, which is county property. Historically, our process is, there's an application process, you have to prove insurance, and it comes to the commission to approve. This, they're wanting to do next Wednesday at 6:00. And so the City of Liberty is working with them, they're waiving all their fees for closing streets, their police department, fire department are involved in helping this happen. And so we've been approached to help expedite this, to help have this celebration. So what I'm asking the commission is to provide me the authorization to collaborate with the City of Liberty for the use of our property in front of the courthouse for this celebration. The City of Liberty is covering this event under their insurance, so I'm very confident that, you know, there's minimal risk to the county on this. And so because of a timing sensitivity and not being able to go through our normal process, I'm asking for authorization to basically work with the City of Liberty to help this celebration.
I mean, for me, the idea that the insurance is taking the liability insurance is certainly one of the most important things to me. It sounds as though that is being covered under the City of Liberty, so that's certainly one concern that we need not worry about. Yeah, so what you're looking for is just basically a consensus, allowing you authorization to go forward, open it up for discussions. Anybody wish to make comment or question on this? Commissioner Withington?
Yeah, no, I'm fine with that. I think it's, you know, like we said earlier, this is a historic season for the football team. It's the first championship in the entire school district's history, so I think it's, I think it's fine with me, so.
Okay. Commissioner Johnson?
It's a bunch of high school kids. What could possibly go wrong? So this is just for Liberty North, right? Carney's not involved in this?
That's correct. This is just Liberty North. I would assume that Carney and the City of Carney are going to be doing some kind of, probably some similar celebration up in the City of Carney, but I've not heard of anything.
They used to do their own downtown carney.
Okay. If you don't know, Carney also won the state championship. They're class four. Liberty North is class six.
It'll be yours.
It'll be, yeah, okay, that's right. It would have been fun if they could have done a joint thing for both teams, but, okay, yeah, I'm all for this. I think it'll be great. I'll be there.
Commissioner Wagner?
Go for it.
Mr. Counselor, do you foresee any concerns on the legal side of this? I mean, I don't, but that's why you're here.
We'll get it worked out.
Okay, very good. Am I right that there's consensus for the Administrator to go forward on this as outlined? Very good. And you have all the information you need that Administrator to do that?
I do, thank you very much.
Very good. That, I'm sorry, I should have asked if anyone else wanted to comment from the audience, but it's gotten rather thin now that we've gone through most of our agenda. That ends the discussion items. That concludes those discussion items. That brings us to reports. Administrator?
Yes, there are two reports in your agenda packet. The first item is the monthly cash report from the Auditor's Office for the month of November 2023. And then you also have included in your packet the Clay Como Special Road District Number Four, their annual financial statement, which their year ended June 30 of 2023.
Very good. That brings us to county Administrator comments. You are once again recognized.
Thank you. Just a couple of items. As Planner Spees mentioned earlier and had on the screen, again, we have our survey that's still open and will be open through the end of January on our website for the comprehensive plan. There is also opened today, I believe, the virtual open house for individuals that were not able, the public, to attend any of our open houses, either, you know, that we had an Excelsior or Gladstone, they can go on virtually and participate in that open house at the website. And that'll be open until January 12. And again, as I said, our survey is on that site and is available for the public to participate through January 31. So we encourage everyone to go and do that. If someone is interested in a paper copy of the survey, we have those available at the Park Office, here in the Admin Building, at the Planning and Zoning Office, and at the Annex. So we certainly will collect those and then add those to the online surveys. So with that, the only other item is the next meetings of the commission. So there will be a budget workshop on Wednesday, December 20, at 9:30. And then the commission's regular meeting, which is the last meeting of the calendar year, is Wednesday, the 21st, at 6:00 here in the chambers.
Very good. That brings us to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Wagner? I'm sorry, there you go.
No comments, thank you.
Commissioner Lawson? Commissioner Withington? Commissioner Carpenter? Commissioner Thompson? Commissioner Johnson? Okay. I do have a couple of things. One is, this afternoon, I attended the retirement ceremony for Gary Zabarak, the head of our Clay County Health Centers, and I delivered the resolution that we passed. So it was well-attended. There were a lot of people there. We all talked about the service that he had rendered this county for the last 20 years. Dr. Rex Archer, who was with the Kansas City Health Centers, was also in attendance, as well as other people from the legislature and other places around the state. So that was well-attended. There were some other meetings. I went to, had a TIF meeting. It was largely procedural, just approving some of the approved of expenses, so it was rather procedural, rather mundane. So with that, I don't have any other comments to make. That brings us to executive sessions. Is there a motion related to our executive sessions?
Yes, I move to go into executive session pursuant to RSMO 610.021 sub 2 and sub 12 to cover real estate and contractual matters and to adjourn therefrom.
Motion's been made to go into executive session under Missouri Statute 610.021, parentheses, to real estate, parentheses, 12 contractual, and to adjourn therefrom. Discussion? So you're done, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.[1782.38]